All right. Good evening. We will get started now. This is, I'm Representative Buzz Brockway and I appreciate you tuning into my online town hall meeting. We do a couple of these a year normally during the legislative session which, as you all know, our legislative session here in Georgia just wrapped up. So we'll go ahead and get started, do a little recap of what happened. Before we do that, I just want to mention a couple of things. I hope you all are registered to vote. Everybody watching this, if you're not registered to vote, you still have time to register and vote in the May 20 primaries, the Republican or Democrat primaries. You have till April 21st in order to do that. Excuse me. And Georgia now has online voter registration. This is Secretary of State Brian Kemp just rolled this out last week and I'm very excited about it. I think it's a great thing. And I'm proud to say that that was part of a bill that I carried a couple of years ago, 2011, on behalf of Secretary Kemp. It was a piece that came out of a study committee that he had put together to take a look at Georgia's election laws. And that was one thing we did to try to modernize Georgia's election laws and making it much easier to register to vote. So go to the Secretary of State's website, which you can do, you can just Google that, but it's sos.ga.gov. All right. In relation to that, May 20th is our general primaries here in Georgia. Excuse me. And Republicans and Democrats will go to the polls and select their nominees for various offices from US Senate on down to Dog Catcher. So make sure that you get out and vote. Absentee ballots are available tomorrow. Early voting will be available three weeks, or advanced voting, they call it, advanced in-office voting, will be available three weeks before May 20th. So look for an email from me about that, as that deadline, as that information gets closer. I also want to remind you about the Vote For Buzz app, which you can get on your iPhone. And we're very close to having the Droid version available. But I want to point out to you, we've got a poll running in the app. You come in here, you click on polls, and we've got one right now. It says, "If the Republican primary for US Senate were held today, for whom would you vote?" And we've got that going on right now. Right now Congressman Paul Brown leads that. It's an unscientific poll, it's just for fun. But I'm curious to see what users of the app think about that. And we'll do one for the Democrats and do some other stuff as well as the weeks go by. I just want to spend a couple of minutes going over a few of the bills that maybe didn't get a lot of attention this year, but were passed and were sent to the governor's desk that I think were important. You all know about some of the big ones, the HB 60, the Georgia Right to Carry Act. We've talked about that a few times here on the podcast. But a couple of the ones that I wanted to highlight, of course, you also know about House Bill 707, which was amended onto House Bill 943, Georgia Healthcare Freedom Act, which is sort of our stand against some of the excesses and overreach that we, as Republicans, feel are going on with the Affordable Care Act that was passed up in Washington. Also, House Bill 990, it basically says if Georgia's going to expand Medicaid, that the legislature needs to vote on that. And I think that's an important bill, whether you're for Medicaid extension or against it. That ought to be, that's a huge decision, and that ought to be a decision that comes from the legislature. The legislature is the one who crafts the budget and votes on the budget. The governor, of course, proposes a budget, but that is not, the legislature has the right under our constitution, it's the responsibility, rather, to amend that budget and change that budget as the legislature sees fit. And we all, as your elected representatives, have that duty. So the decision to spend an enormous sum of money, or accept and accept an enormous sum of money with plenty of strings attached from the federal government should be a decision that your elected representatives make. So I voted for that bill as well. Another one that I think is very interesting, which will be on the ballot for you this November, will be an income tax freeze. And this will be a constitutional amendment that will say that Georgia's income tax cannot be increased. Right now, our income tax is at 6%, and our corporate income tax is 6%. And those can't rise without a supermajority vote. All right. Another bill that had been controversial, but it seems like many of the stakeholders came to the table and worked things out, the Mobile Broadband Bill. And this is something that the broadband industry had been pushing for, to make it a little easier for there to be cellphone towers. Cellphone towers sort of become a controversial issue on the local level. Everybody wants cellphone service, but nobody really wants cellphone towers near their house. So this bill streamlines that process, makes it a little easier for there to be cellphone towers. There's an enormous demand, as you might imagine. We all walk around with these things. There's an enormous demand out there for mobile service. Something, two other bills that have been worked on for a long time, two years in the making, were House Bills 264 and 265. And those reform quite a bit the structure of MARTA, and the makeup of the board, and governance issues in relation to MARTA. And that may not be a big issue to folks in rural Georgia or outside the metro area, but it's very important. Atlanta is a huge economic driver for the state of Georgia, and MARTA is a key component of our transportation services in the city. And so it's a quasi-state agency, so it needs to be overseen, and we're exercising our authority there to make some improvements in that process. House Bill 788 was a bill brought with the encouragement of the border regents of the university system. And this will give them some flexibility in signing agreements with private entities to run housing and parking facilities. And this seems like a good idea. We put some language in there to tighten that, and from what it was originally proposed, and to clean it up a little bit, so that there's tight controls over who gets these sort of contracts, and that this doesn't become some sort of crony capitalist sort of thing. But colleges aren't, colleges should be in the business of educating, not in the housing business, and not in the parking lot business. So it makes perfect sense to hire entities that are good at those things, and maybe return a little profit back to the university, and have them handle a lot better. So that was a bill that we pushed through. And feel free, as I run through these, to ask any questions about these. I know I'm going through kind of fast, but we dealt with a lot of bills this year. So I'm just trying to highlight a few here. Probably, I think I cast, I added it up, I posted a spreadsheet, as you all know, on my webpage, that shows how I voted on everything that we voted on this year. And it was over 700 votes that were cast. House Bill 804, it updates Georgia's remote testimony law. And what that's dealing with, this was a bill that I was glad to help out a little bit with Representative Edward Lindsay. And it was brought to us by the Fulton County District Attorney's Office. Right now, if you have a very tragic case of child molestation, or some other thing where the victim is a child, you're allowed to not make that child come into the courtroom and be in the same room with the alleged perpetrator of that crime. Our laws have recognized that, that that is something that in certain cases is better. You don't want to have to put the child who's a victim through a lot of trauma. So we updated that law to account for some new technologies, and to give a little more flexibility to the prosecutors, where they can have it off-site rather than in the courtroom, and it extends the age, increases the age limit a little bit, to up to 17, to match what many other states are doing, while still protecting the rights of a trial by jury, and the right to confront your accuser for the alleged perpetrator of these crimes. So I was proud to help co-sponsor that bill, and glad to see it move through to help our kids. Another bill that my friend and colleague, Representative Josh Clark, another Gwinnett County representative, got pushed through, provides some security to your kids relating to identity theft. Identity theft among children is a huge problem. Thieves, identity thieves will get a hold of your child's social security number, and you won't even know about it, because kids don't access their, kids aren't out there getting credit or credit cards or things on a regular basis until they get a little older. And so by that time, they'll wake up one day, and when they come of age, and realize that somebody's been stealing, has stolen their identity, and rained up all sorts of debts. So this allows, puts in Georgia law where it allows you as a parent, if you want, to freeze your child's credit reports and those sorts of things, so that they don't get stolen, makes it harder for identities to get them. So Representative Josh Clark got that through, and we're glad that it's off to the governor for his signature. Let me talk about just one or two more here. The third piece of Governor Deal's criminal justice reform was a bill we passed, Senate Bill 365. And that deals with reentry of an offender back into society. And we, you know, part of, a lot of the things that we have done in criminal justice reform two years ago, juvenile justice reform last year, and this year with offender reentry, is to try to do things to reduce the recidivism rate, to try to do things to help criminals who have done their time, and now are going back into society, to integrate back into society in a healthy way, and not fall back into that same pattern. And that's what this bill does. And we hope that we see some really positive results out of that, to get these folks reformed and back into society, and being productive members of society. Two other things I'll mention very quickly, and then we'll get on to your questions, or talk about anything else that you want to talk about. House Bill 1080, kind of a small bill, but I think an important one. And that is, excuse me, allows for the creation, or the commissioning of a statue to honor Martin Luther King Jr., who of course was an Atlanta native, was pastor of Ebenezer Baptist Church for many years, which is just down the street from the Capitol. And allow a statue of him, paid for by private funds, to be placed on the Capitol grounds. And this was a good, I think, a good bill. There's a portrait of him in the Capitol, but I would think it's appropriate to have a statue recognizing him on the Capitol grounds. Last bill I'll mention, House Bill 958, it renewed a $25 million tax credit for video game production. Atlanta, whether you know it or not, the North Georgia region, including many here in Gwinnett County, has become a real hotspot and hub for video game production. And this is a huge business these days. So we've got this tax credit that is sort of tied in and related to the film tax credit, which has been very successful. It also renewed the, or changed the date, rather, of the sales tax holiday for school shopping. We had a weird quirk when we renewed that a couple of years ago, and where schools were starting earlier than the school tax holidays. So that didn't seem to make much sense. So we fixed that. So anyway, that's a bill that was passed as well. And, you know, many of you may have seen a photo that I sent out yesterday. Happened to be driving by, excuse me, I'm sorry. It's pollen, it's getting to me. Driving near the OFS facility down in Norcross, and there's movies being filmed. As you know, that facility is in the process of being purchased, and a movie studio, one of the larger movie studios in the South, actually, will be, is going to be built there. But they're already filming movies there. And they had a big parking lot, and they were putting these shipping containers up. And inside that was blue screen where they were filming movies. I'm not sure which one they were filming. Somebody had said that it might be the latest Hunger Games movie. But anyway, that's kind of exciting and visible. And as these facilities are built, we're starting to see these, not just provide tax credits for companies that are Hollywood that are coming out here temporarily, but tax credits for, that are, this film tax credit is beginning to spur economic growth right here in Georgia. When movie studios are willing to invest hundreds of millions of dollars to build a studio right here in Georgia, that is, they're going to hire Georgians. There's going to be all sorts of ancillary effects around that. And I believe there's seven of them, either being massively expanded. Tyler Perry's studio in Atlanta, he's pumping $100 million into expanding his studio. And then there's six other new ones, including, in addition to the one at the OFS plant in Norcross. The Pinewood Studios, which is the famous studio in England that films all the James Bond movies, is building a studio down on the south side of Atlanta. There was an article, you may have seen an article in the newspaper today, that there's going to be an actual Home Depot store in the Pinewood Studios. And that's pretty interesting. It'll be a Home Depot for just one customer. But if you think about it, movies use a lot of lumber. They're going to be building sets and all sorts of things. And I was able to get a tour of that facility last summer. Me and a friend of mine went down there and got a tour of that. By then, it was just dirt with a few buildings, empty buildings up. But they plan to hire a lot of people. It'll be about $142 million facility down there. They'll be hiring seamstresses, and video technicians, and all the sorts of backend things that go on in movies will be employed down there at that facility. So with that, that's really all I had. We'll see, let me scan through here, see if there's any questions. If anybody has any questions, feel free to ask them. I guess I've answered everything. I don't see any questions right now. But it is election season, as you're probably well aware. Some of you may already be receiving robocalls, and mail, and those sorts of things that happen in elections. And that'll be increasing as we get closer to the May 20th primary. I may have mentioned this before, but I'll go ahead while we're waiting to see if anybody has any questions for us. Why is, you know, the reason we're having a May 20th primary, is the earliest primary in Georgia that anybody can remember. It comes out of a federal lawsuit. There was a law passed a few years ago by Congress, it's been several years ago now, called the Move Act. And basically what it does, it says that military personnel are allowed 45 days to obtain and send back their absentee ballot. So Georgia, as you may recall, we would have a primary in July, and then three weeks later, we'd have a runoff. Well, if nobody got a majority. Well, in runoff, you need to have, you need to allow people 45 days to obtain that ballot. Well, three weeks is less than 45 days. So the federal government sued us, and we had to move our primary date. So it got moved up to, to May 20th was something that we agreed with the judge that we should have. So that's the reason we have a May 20th primary. It's school's still in session. It's, you know, right before the end of school, oh no, school might end right before. Anyway, depending on the snow days, school will end around that time. So it'll be interesting to see how that happens. And the primary, excuse me, the runoff, if nobody obtains a majority, will be two months later. So the primary runoff will be in July, rather than three weeks later, as it had been traditionally. All right, we do have a question. The question says, "Can you explain how the income tax cap will work? And how does it become law?" It's a constitutional amendment. Let me pull up the bill, and I'll read exactly from it. So it's a constitutional amendment. It'll be, so citizens of Georgia will have to vote on it this November. Senate Resolution 415, let me look that up real quick, and we'll read the, I'll actually read the ballot question to you, and see how that. It was a resolution offered by Senator Schaefer of Gwinnett County. And it adds to the state constitution, increase in state income tax rate is prohibited. The General Assembly shall not increase the maximum marginal rate of state income tax above that which is in effect on January 1st, 2015. So if this passes, if the majority of citizens vote for this in November, then beginning January 2015, the legislature will not have the ability to raise the state income tax without amending the constitution. So the question that will appear on your ballot in November will say, "Shall the Constitution of Georgia be amended to prohibit the General Assembly from increasing the maximum state income tax rate?" And we'll see how the debate unfolds on that. I'm sure that will be, we had sort of vigorous debate in the House over it, broke down pretty much along party lines. We had two Democrats vote with the Republicans, and that gave us the necessary margin of two-thirds, you have to have two-thirds of the House and Senate to propose a constitutional amendment for citizens to ratify. So we had two Democrats come along with the Republicans to vote for it. It gave us that 120 votes. So we'll see what the, how that debate unfolds as the weeks and months go by. So if this passes, I was, correct something I said earlier, if there's no possibility of increasing the tax rate in Georgia, should this amendment be ratified by the people of Georgia. Thank you for the question. Scan through here, see if there's any others on Twitter, or on the webpage. We got, that's the only question we've got. All right. Well, we'll wait a few more minutes. We're at about 27 minutes here. We normally last between 30 and 45. So we'll give a few more minutes here to see if any other questions arise. I do, now that the session's over, those of you, many of you are probably on my email list. During the legislative session, I send out a weekly email recapping what has gone on during the legislative session during that week. Of course, session's over, so you will not be receiving any more weekly emails. I'll send out periodic emails to keep you up to date on things that I'm doing, and things that may be of interest to you, and let you know information on elections as they come up, since this is an election year, and other events that may be going on. I will take a moment, since we have the time, I'll go ahead and take a moment to let you know. I do have an opponent. I didn't draw a Republican or a Democrat opposition this year, but I did draw an independent. And a very nice lady, met her a few weeks ago. She came down to see me at the Capitol, let me know she's running, and pledged to have a debate focused on the issues, which I appreciate very much. And she's out trying to obtain the necessary signatures to get on the ballot, and seems to be well on her way to doing that. So if you want a Vote For Buzz sticker, I know a few of you have requested them, that you can stick on your car. I'll certainly send that to you. There's a form on my website that you can get it. Or if you look in the weekly email that I sent out this past weekend, it's got a link to, link on it. Or you can just email me at buzzbrockway@gmail.com, and I'll tell me where to send the bumper sticker, and I'll get it right out to you. Of course, I would covet your prayers and your support. Been finishing up my second term here in the legislature, and it's been a great honor for me to do that. And it's been a lot of fun. I've been a political animal for much of my life, so I enjoy politics. I even enjoy mixing it up and debating. So I look forward to this campaign as we move along here. Get out there and talk about ideas. I will tell you, kind of put it on your calendar, May 23rd, when your state let us- I will tell you, kind of put it on your calendar, May 23, when you're a state legislator, you get to do a lot of cool things. And one really cool opportunity that's come my way, courtesy of the Gwinnett Braves, is they've asked me to throw out the first pitch at the baseball game on May 23, down the street from us here at Coolray Field. So, if you're inclined, I'm sure the Braves would love to see you come, come out to catch a ballgame. It's a lot of fun, that's a great little ballpark, a lot of fun, a lot of fun watching a game there. I do see we have another question. "Have there been any requests or questions from your church or others about HB 60, the gun bill?" Yes, actually. I have not heard directly from my pastor, but I've heard from, I go to a large church, Victory World Church, satellite location in Hamilton Mill, up on 85, near Hamilton Mill Road. And we have security guards who, we have to hire off-duty police to come and help us. But we also have people there at the church who have all the skills, and have the, all of the training that you need to be a security guard, but they're not allowed to carry a weapon with them at the church. And like, if you have a church of thousands of people, there's always a possibility of an incident. So, I know that some of the security guys are at our church are very interested in that. We also, I serve at the church on the offering counting team, and as you might imagine, a big church, we gather a lot of cash. So, you know, there are legitimate security concerns where a weapon would be necessary. So, I don't know what my church is going to do. I certainly don't speak for them at all. But I think, I know that some of their security guys are interested in that, and they will be taking that issue to the pastors and the leadership of the church. And just to explain what we're talking about here, part of House Bill 60, the Safe Carry Protection Act, was the granting churches the ability, if they want. The church would have to affirmatively vote in favor of doing this, to allow people in their church to bring a weapon with them to church. And listen, you know, that was sort of a controversial issue as part of the gun bill, but I'll tell you this, it's the law in many other states to allow people to bring guns to churches. And again, when we talk about this issue, we're talking about carry permits, which in Georgia, you have to be over the age of 21, you have to pass a background check. And statistics will show you that people who have carry permits are the most responsible carriers of weapons, without a doubt. People who have carry permits don't commit crimes, almost never. So, we're not talking about crazy people running around with guns, okay? We're talking about very responsible citizens who have gone through a rigorous process. That's what we're talking about here. But, you know, listen, we live in the South, and we live in a state where hunting is very popular, as many other states where hunting is extremely popular, that, so, if you're thinking that Georgians right now aren't carrying guns to church with them, you're mistaken. And it's not just Georgia. I met a Democrat representative from Vermont a few months ago, last year, rather, at a conference. And he is, was, and he told me that his state, their Democratic Party, was as pro-Second Amendment as anybody in Georgia or anywhere else. And why? They have a proud tradition in Vermont of hunting. They also have a proud tradition of Vermont, they are very independent-minded up there. And they want to run their state the way they want to run it. And that's the great thing about America. Let people run their states the way they want to run them, rather than trying to mandate it from Washington. So, that's part of HB 60, which is on the governor's desk. He has, I believe, another month or so to, I was glancing at the calendar, he has another month or so to deal with the bills that the legislature sent to him. There was an article in the paper the other day, that Governor Deal, Governor Deal's office was sort of indicating that there won't be very many bills that they veto. And there's very good reason for that. And I can tell you, I don't know, Governor Deal's the only governor that I have, who's been governor since I've been elected. So, I don't know how it was under previous governors. But I'll just tell you, his office and his floor leaders, there's three floor leaders in the House, three floor leaders in the Senate, there's other staff that work for the governor, and they are in constant communication, and constantly observing and working with the legislature. Not from, there's only a, very few issues where Governor Deal really, in my experience, these three years that he's been, his fourth year now that he's been in office, and I have too, where he really takes a strong stand one way or another publicly. But there are, he does work very closely with the legislature. And so, you end up with bills that pass that the governor generally agrees with. And that, you know, sometimes that's a frustrating process, because you'd love to convince the governor that what you are thinking of is the right approach and the right way to do it. And then, but when it comes time after the session's over, and there's a stack of bills on his desk, you know that he's probably going to sign almost all of them. He has only vetoed just a handful of bills in the three years prior to this one, so... All right, it's about 7:36. I'm looking through, I don't see any other questions right now. I don't really have anything else on my list that I wanted to cover. I very much, as I said, I appreciate all of you folks in District 102 for putting your faith and trust in me, and picking me and our representative republic to go down and act on your behalf at the state legislature. I appreciate the feedback that I get. I work hard to try to get feedback by email, or phone calls, or forums like this. We've got the Vote for Buzz app, which is another avenue for you. You know, I'm on Twitter, and Facebook, and Instagram. I even have a Pinterest page. I don't really know what to do with it yet, but we'll figure that out. And I try to, try to just communicate with all of you as much as possible. So, at that, at this juncture, I will go ahead and sign off, and I appreciate all of you joining me here tonight, or those of you who are watching this on the replay. Appreciate you taking the time to get involved, and visit the website at votforbuzz.com, and email me at buzzbrockway@gmail.com, and let me know what your thoughts are. Thank you very much.